Good afternoon. We now call the meeting of Waco City Council April 21st, 2020 to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabedo, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Dylan Meek, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. Please join us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his State of Disaster Authority. The change was effective March 16, 2020 until further notice or until the state disaster declaration expires. In accordance with social distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, the Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is being recorded and the recording will be available to the public. According to the Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that governmental bodies offer alternatives, methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary no later than two hours before the meeting. The city secretary, Esmeralda Hudson, will read into the record the comments submitted to the city secretary by 1:00 PM Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, for items on the agenda during the appropriate time. For public hearings, the public was asked to register with the city secretary and will call in by phone to provide their comments. When the registered speaker is acknowledged, they must limit their comments to three minutes. For any person addressing the council through use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with the work from the city manager. Wiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to you and the council members. There are no changes to the agenda. You should have received a link to the addendum which added Resolution 2020-263. Under employee recognition, I'd like to, I guess, recognize our new IT Director, Mike Seiride. He's not here, but I do hope that sometime in the near future we can properly introduce him to the council, give the council a chance to meet him and know him. He comes to us from McLennan Community College where he held the position of Director of Information Systems and Services. He led the MCC Enterprise IT Strategy in alignment with the College's Strategic Plan for 25 years. Mike brings 30 years of experience in the field of information technology. He has a diverse background with extensive experience in enterprise computing, cybersecurity, IT operations, and telecommunications. We're really excited to have Mike join us. He came to work yesterday, and like I said, I'm looking forward to properly introducing him to the council in the near future. Also, under employee recognition, the council may have noticed in the paper that the Central Texas Food Bank Mobile Food Pantry came to Waco last week and was able to distribute emergency food assistance to nearly 1,400 households. The president of the food bank, Derek Chubbs, said the assistance of the Waco Police Department was critical to the success of the distribution to help our citizens, and he sent his thanks for Waco PD's flexibility as the food bank adapts to new demands. Again, this is one of the compliments that I get from around the community about the work that our public servants are doing, particularly our police department and fire department. And I'm just really proud of the work they're doing. I know the council feels the same way. So I wanted to recognize them. And with that, I will go to the Holsey Report. Larry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Stimp. All right, here we go. The Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum has launched a new internet portal to the historical collections of the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum. Visitors worldwide can browse a selection of over 20,000 artifacts, artwork, photographs, and documents preserved for the future generations in a permanent collection. These resources are made available to the public for education, research purposes, and personal enjoyment. Waco firefighters and Waco police officers have both helped spread the word to stay home, save lives by each creating a 30-second PSA that's been provided to local TV stations to air. The PSA is also on the city website, so our citizens can see these first responders collectively repeating how shelter in place is the way to end the spread of COVID-19 and to stay home and save lives. We just shot a Spanish version with the police department this morning that will be posted and start airing right away. The PSAs were produced in-house by the Municipal Information Department. While closed to the public, the Cavern Park Zoo is offering virtual field trips through weekly Facebook Live videos. Now anyone can experience the Cavern Park Zoo virtually and engage with the natural world in a fun way to improve their knowledge of conservation and learn about some of the daily tasks of a zookeeper. Park crews are helping the task at the animal shelter for assisting with cleaning, sanitizing, and drying the kennels to make sure they're all safe for the animals. They've also helped by providing food and water for the animals as well. They've also been helping exercise the dogs to ensure that they have outdoor time, especially when the weather is nice. Another great partnership in sharing of staff resources to make sure even our four-legged friends get the care they need. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor and council, on the agenda this afternoon, under public hearings, there are two. The first would reallocate $196,706 primarily for tenant-based rental assistance. There's also $94,000 in there for neighborworks, single-family development. Public hearing 2020-254 would reallocate $256,141 for a transit bus shelter in amount of $25,000. It's some work on transit bus shelters. And then $112,000 for Mission Waco Shelter Operations and $119,000 for Salvation Army Shelter Operations.
Wiley, are we going to be tracking how many, like on the shelter operations, how many extra are going to be housed? Is there anything else just in terms of outcomes that we're looking for that with this extra funding? Can you just give a little more detail on that?
Yeah, I asked Deidre to come up.
Yes, councilmember, in that process, we will be tracking the number of unduplicated clients served over the normal amount of clients that have been served, as well as meals and case management services that are provided.
Do we know about how long these funds will last, the shelters?
About three and a half months.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Deidre. Under resolutions, there are seven today. The first I'd like to highlight is Resolution 2020-255. This approves an amendment with Prosper Waco to provide additional one-time funding amount of $150,000 for Roundtable. It's a customized community-based information system to assist with assessing Waco's needs during COVID-19 and beyond. Resolution 2020-
Wiley, I just had a question. I just want to make sure that that 150 is within the allocation that we already have for the year for Prosper Waco. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And that system is a pretty, it's kind of a state-of-the-art system that we kind of need, and it's not redundant with the HMIS that we currently have for the homelessness thing, does that and more, if I'm not mistaken.
I think Deidre wants to give us the facts here.
So the $150,000 is coming out, you're correct, it's coming out the money that's been assigned or earmarked for Prosper Waco. And this is, the Roundtable system is more robust than the HMIS system. The HMIS system is more focused towards your homeless community, and the Roundtable database is more broader than that.
Great. Thanks, Deidre.
Is there any overlap between the two?
No, sir. I mean, we might capture the homeless population under the Roundtable, but it's not limited to the homeless population. Roundtable is community-wide, not one singular population.
Okay. Thank you, Deidre. That's all ahead.
Thank you, Deidre. And Jennifer, while Deidre was talking, Jennifer corrected me, we have eight resolutions today. The next one I wanted to highlight is Resolution 2020-257. This would authorize the submission of an application and approve acceptance of an FAA grant for $1,856,275 from the Airport Improvement Program, and this is a 100% grant. Resolution 2020-258 awards a contract to J&amp;K Utility Services for the Warren Road Lift Station Improvements Project. This is part of our system capacity upgrades to support the growth in the Ritchie Road and Highway 84 corridor. This is also a partnership with City of Hewitt. We entered into agreement with them. They provided $32,000 of the funding. We're going to be doing significant upgrades to the station, additional pumps, larger pumping capacity, and a standby generator, and changing the electrical power from single-phase to three-phase. And so our effective cost, the city Waco's effective cost, is $185,420. This project is expected to be completed next winter. Resolution 2020-259-
Wiley?
Yes?
I did want to bring some attention to, especially to 258, and I was pleased to see that the bid was awarded to an MWBE contractor. So I think that that's important, that we're tracking that and making, you know, we look for the best deal, we look for the best bid. But, you know, we want to make sure that we are awarding these contracts to MWBE folks so that they can continue to apply and they can continue to set the path to work for and with the city of Waco. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay. Resolution 220-259, this is a professional engineering services agreement with CPNY for the Water and Wastewater Utility Design and Relocation Project associated with the Mall-to-Mall TechStop Project, which is Highway 6, Loop 340, from Bagby to Highway 84. This is a high-priority MPO project, and the engineering costs alone associated with this are $753,631. There will also be-
A slot?
A rearrangement of our Water and Wastewater CIPs because the actual cost of the work that we'll be doing is estimated at about eight and a half million dollars. So you'll see some changes in the Water and Wastewater CIP in future meetings. But this contract with CPNY will move the design forward to work closely with TechStop to get this project completed.
This is just one where TechStop doesn't give us a lot of leeway on the timing of it. They say do it, we just have to do it. So we're rearranging our priorities for this?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Resolution 2020-260 awards a contract for construction services to BlackRock Construction for one of our phases of the wastewater improvements for Highway 84 corridor. This particular phase would upgrade the wastewater collection system to specifically handle that growing corridor and to, it looks directly to a new development that actually the council approved agreement with back in November. It's Cooper's Real Estate Investment. This is for the West End Development. It's just past the McGregor Airport on the right at, what's the name of this?
Valverde.
Valverde. Valverde is the road that cuts off there. And so we have a reimbursement agreement of $2,000 per final platted lot. There's 619 lots in the preliminary plan for a $1,240,000 reimbursement. The developer also agreed to submit a petition for voluntary annexation in exchange for the city's construction of the sewer improvements. The developer has executed the agreement for both the reimbursement and the voluntary annexation. The original estimate for the street improvements and the water and wastewater improvements was a little over $6 million. Well, with the street replacement improvements, $7.16 million, and the bid came in at 4.8 million. So we feel really good about this bid, and we'll be moving this project forward with council's approval and estimate completion summer of 2021.
I just want to say, I appreciate this one. I mean, we all know that growth is kind of still bustling in that area, and the infrastructure and capacity is constrained. So I think this is necessary, and I appreciate it. Just how much additional capacity will this project add? I mean, do we know like how long and how much growth we'll be able to accommodate with this one?
Well, I believe in the engineering studies, they projected another 20 years' worth of growth. And I want to say that's about one and a half, two million gallons a day, Paul. Is that right? Yeah, we'll look, we'll get that for you. But if I remember the engineering study, it's about two million gallons a day once it's built out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Under ordinance, there's ordinance 2020-262, some emergency reading that designates Wells Fargo Bank as the depository for the city from May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2023. We're required to rebid our request proposals every five years for our bank depository. It includes a lot of different services from the bank. Our finance department evaluated the proposals we got and worked closely with Linda Patterson of Patterson's Associates, our investment advisor, to select this. And I think you have a letter in your packet explaining the process and the recommendation for Patterson and Associates. And so we would request this moved forward with the staff's recommendation. Also, I did want to add, we will be doing a separate RFP for merchant services, which is our credit card processing. It was issued this year and will be awarded at a future council meeting.
Wiley, thank you so much. I do want to go back to Resolution 257. I apologize for not bringing it up while you were on it. I did not, I could not figure out how to mute my audio, so I do apologize that I let this pass. But I do want to clarify, especially for maybe those that are watching at home, the 1.8 million for the Airport Improvement Program is different from the 18 million that was awarded to the Waco Regional Airport that the newspaper ran an article on. And so I just want to say that we're looking at close to $20 million additional revenue for our regional airport here in Waco. And so I think that's not anything to sneeze at, and I really want to thank city staff and, of course, the staff at the Waco Airport, Joel Martinez and all his staff, for all of the work that they're doing and just the great things that are going on in the airport. If you've been in the airport here recently, you've seen some of the major changes that have gone there. And so I just really want to take this time to really congratulate the staff, congratulate the city, and just it's exciting to see this type of governmental funding coming, or federal funding coming for Waco, Texas. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, councilmember. Also, Esmeralda handed me the eighth resolution, which is 2020-263. This is Consider Resolution Modifying the Declaration of Local Disaster and Public Health Emergency, issued March 17th, amended March 19th, and March 23rd by Kyle Dever and ordered by the city council of the city of Waco on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, and as extended on March 31st, 2020, and April 14th, 2020, to allow retail businesses that are not essential businesses to provide retail services through pickup, delivery by mail, or delivery to customers' doorstep. Said modification to be effective at 12:01 on Friday, April 24th, and renewing, restating, and continuing the city's order as may be amended by the city council of the city of Waco, Texas.
Yeah, this is essentially just to bring our order in line with what Governor Abbott announced last Friday. So there won't be any other changes other than that at this point, if that's what we all agree on.
And if there's no questions, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions from council? Are there any items that council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, consent agenda will include Resolutions 2020-255 through Resolution 2020-261, unless a comment card is received on a consent agenda item. And I'll turn it back to Wiley to introduce the next work session presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, our first work session presentation is a discussion of the coronavirus COVID-19 impact on the community and an emergency response plan. Deidre and Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson and Assistant City Manager Ryan Holt are going to handle this. Deidre's going to go first with an update on the COVID-19.
And mayor and council, I think at this point, just when I will read, we only received one comment from the public, and it was on Work Session 2020-249 from Alan Northcutt. And I can read that into the record now if you'd like.
Yes, please go ahead and do that, Esmeralda.
Tomorrow is the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and the coronavirus pandemic is making clear the importance of our relationship to the natural world. The theme for this Earth Day is climate change, and climate change is closely related to the pandemic. First, we know that the majority of new emerging diseases are zoonosis, like COVID-19, diseases that spread from animals to man. And as we heat and defrost, deforest the planet, animal species are forced to migrate and often come into close contact with man, increasing the risk of these zoonosis. Second, we have just learned in a study from Europe that those patients with COVID-19 who live in a region with air pollution from burning fossils fuel had a much higher risk of dying from the disease. Therefore, it is vital that the city continues the transition to clean renewable energy. It has begun. This will help prevent future viral pandemics and improve the diagnosis for its citizens who do acquire these infections. Thank you. Comments by Alan Northcutt.
Thank you, Esmeralda.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today, at 3:00, I'm just going to give you the case counts for today. We have, as of 3:00 today, we have one new case, which then gives us a total of 78 total positive cases. Thirteen of those cases are active, 61 have recovered. Two cases are hospitalized and in critical condition. And we've been talking about our total tests for our county, and that should be updated today on our website as well. So what we will begin to report is as total cases as reported to us from our hospitals, and we will not depend on the Department of State Health Services data. So to date, we've had a total of 2,180 tests that have been completed within our county. And now I'll turn it over to Ryan Holt.
All right, mayor and council, thank you for having the opportunity to talk about the city's emergency response plan. The first slide gives you some background on the preceding events leading to the emergency response plan being activated. The novel Corona or COVID-19 issue has been on the health department's radar since early to mid-January. Health made the first COVID-19 test on January 23rd of a young person who had traveled abroad. Fortunately, that test came back negative. They continued and conducted meetings the week of February 24th and issued a situational report to the city on Friday, February 28th. As you may remember, what seems like more than a year ago, council received an information report on Tuesday, March 3rd, and then the executive team of the city met on March 9th. At about the same time, the EOC issued a preparedness document indicating that the declaration may be needed. Next slide. The city manager then closed certain facilities after much discussion on Saturday, March 14th, and the mayor issued an initial declaration, which would later be extended by this council, on Tuesday, March 17th. In that declaration, it activates what's called the city's emergency plan, and the emergency plan requires the activation of the Emergency Operations Center. As we said, once the declaration is made, the local emergency response plan requires the activation of the Emergency Operations Center. Because of this, on 3/17, in conjunction with the original declaration, and to support council's continued declarations, the Emergency Operations Director, Elizabeth Thomas, activated portions of the emergency plan by instigating a web EOC incident and began immediate plans to staff the actual EOC as laid out in the city of Waco and McLennan County emergency plans. A web EOC incident is a virtual EOC on computer only in preparation for standing up the EOC. The way these plans are developed and the authority that it's derived from begin with the implementation and come from a labyrinth of 13 federal statutes and executive orders, 14 State of Texas statutes or executive directives, and two city ordinances and interlocal agreements. The most is significant of the federal statutes that is commonly referred to as the Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, which was put into place in 1988 and updated in 2006, and again in 2018. The purpose of the Emergency Operations Center is to provide guidance for emergency management activities and an overview for the methods of mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, along with required coordination and documentation of all response and recovery operations. The EOC creates a unified framework for government, the public, and businesses to coordinate information, personnel, and fiscal resources to respond to significant incidents. The operational structure of the EOC is derived from the National Incident Management System, which was a comprehensive national approach to the incident management that is applicable to all jurisdictional levels and across all functional disciplines. This system is suitable across a wide range of incidents and hazard scenarios regardless of size or complexity. It provides a flexible framework for all phases of incident management, as well as requirements for processes, procedures, and systems designed to improve overall interoperability. In conjunction with the National Incident Management System, the Incident Command System provides a specific framework of common terminology, organizational resources, manageable span of control, organizational facilities, use of position titles, reliance on an action plan, integrated communications, and of significant importance, accountability. The main functions of the EOC are usually divided into five areas designated as command, operations, planning, logistics, and finance or administration. Next slide, please. On this slide is an example of the current Emergency Operations Center span of control. The original operations center was designed to hold 45 comfortably. However, with the COVID-19, we can only see 22 with proper distancing. Again, on this screen is the current organizational chart. It's certainly too big to read on the screen, so I'll quickly run through the various portions of the organization for you. Next slide. Back, go back, go back. Back, back. One more, two more. There you go. All right. The first section is the Incident Command area. It's led by the local health authority, who is, in this case, Dr. Farley Werner. The policy group, which is the city manager, the county judge, and the leadership team. The incident commander, who in this case is Dr. Brenda Gray with McLennan County Public Health, and the Unified Command or Deputy Incident Commander, who is Stephanie Alvey, also from the Health District. Next slide. The emergency operations personnel are the EOC Director, Elizabeth Thomas, EOC Assistant Director, Ryan Durker, and EOC Liaison, Kevin McGee. Next slide. Incident Command continues with the Safety Officer, Angela Cullavan and Barry Barrington. Excellent. And it also includes the Public Information Area, which is referred to as a Joint Information Center. In our case, it's led by Kelly Crane, Larry Holsey, the Baylor Scott &amp; White Public Information Officer, and the Ascension Providence Public Information Officer. Next slide. Moving on to the Finance Section. This section is led by Janice Andrews of the city of Waco. The Legal Area is comprised of Judith Benton and John Patterson from the city of Waco. And Cost Tracking is led by Barbara Gurka and Vicky Houghman, also of the city of Waco. Next slide. The Planning Section is led by Waco Fire Department Deputy Chief Kevin Varanik as the Section Chief, and the Deputy Section Chief is Waco Fire Department Battalion Chief, Chris Pekacik. This section also includes Documentation, Situation Group, and also Technical Specialists. Next slide. The Logistics Section is led by Waco Fire Department Deputy Chief Robbie Bergerson. It also includes a Donation Section Lead, which is a volunteer in our case, Sandy Pekacik, who has extensive leadership in the area of nonprofits in the community. Next slide. The Operations Section Chief is led by Sheriff's Office Captain Sean Nixon, includes the Law Enforcement Branch Director, led by Waco Police Department Commander Scott Holt, the Mass Care Branch Director, Jennifer Johnson, the Public Health Branch Director, Stephanie Alvey, Medical Branch Directors Patricia Heberlin from the Capital Area Texas Regional Advisory Council, or you'll hear me refer to that as the CATRAC, and also Chris- Advisory Council, or you'll hear me refer to that as the CATRAC, and also Christine Reeves from HOT Rack or the Heart of Texas Regional Advisory Council. The regional advisory councils are the administrative bodies responsible for trauma system oversight within the bounds of a given trauma service area. Each of the 22 RACs in Texas are tasked with developing, implementing, and monitoring a regional emergency medical service trauma system plan. Generally, RAC stakeholders are comprised of healthcare entities and other concerned citizens with an interest in improving and organizing trauma care. As such, not every RAC is structured exactly the same. This area also includes the fire group, the hospital group, and the EMS group, which is led by AMR ambulance service Heather Schmidt. Next slide, please. This slide outlines the flow of information and requests that can originate at any level of the emergency management framework. Typically, requests will originate at the local level and flow to the state and federal level for fulfillment. A local government is expected to use all of its own resources and the resources available to it through mutual aid agreements before requesting assistance from the state. Municipalities must request assistance from their county before requesting assistance from the state. If local and mutual aid resources prove inadequate for coping with a disaster, the local government then may request assistance from the state by contacting either their local district coordinator, who in our case is Martin Whitfield, or the local disaster district committee chairperson, who is the commanding officer of the Texas Highway Patrol District. In our case, that's Captain Tyler Harple. Next slide. There are a total of seven districts, including the capital area, which is its own district across the state of Texas. Next slide. And then the state is further divided into 24 disaster districts. We're in disaster district 11, along with Boski County, Falls County, Limestone County, Free Stone, and Hill Counties. Next slide. Requests for assistance must be made on behalf of the local chief elected official, which in our case is the mayor. In our case, this is accomplished using the EOC through an electronic system called the State of Texas Assistance Request, directly to the governor of Texas through the Texas Department of Emergency Management. You must submit that request to the state operations center. The request must indicate that the disaster is of such magnitude that local resources are inadequate to deal with, and the affected locality cannot address the issue without state or federal assistance. All local disasters will be directed by officials of local government. Next slide. Because of this particular emergency has been related to infectious disease, the primary need has been personal protective equipment centered around gowns, face masks, face shields, gloves, and other masks. After the local supply was exhausted, the EOC made star requests to the state of Texas. PPE became a scarce resource and difficult to procure across the state nationally and internationally. The Texas Department of State Health Services issued a memo with a ranking structure for the prioritization for the allocation of available PPE. It included Level 1, which are hospitals or healthcare professionals in contact with or treating confirmed COVID patients with potentially for high loss of life, not primary care physicians, and only needed to protect the most critical capacity in hospitals. It also included healthcare facilities, including long-term care facilities with an emerging or active outbreak of cases. Level 2 includes facilities and EMS personnel that may encounter a suspected case and interface with vulnerable populations. It also includes healthcare hospitals that may encounter patients, EMS, hospital staff for in-house testing, long-term care facilities with a history of COVID, or isolated patient step-down locations. Level 3 includes healthcare facilities, providers, and first responders that only have general patient encounters and needs. Additionally, the EOC, along with the public health and first responder organizations like law enforcement, fire, and ambulance providers, have trained in the distribution of goods from the Strategic National Stockpile. The SNS, as it's called, is run by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and is tasked with maintaining necessary inventories of antibiotics, medical supplies, including PPE, equipment, antidotes, antitoxins, antivirals, vaccines, and other pharmaceuticals that are strategically located throughout the United States and its territories. Because of this training and coordinated communication efforts between the EOC, local health authorities, including CATRAC, HOT Rack, the state of Texas, and FEMA, to date, we have received four shipments of Strategic National Stockpile PPE since March 19th. At the time this presentation was put together, all priority one requests for PPE have been fulfilled. Next slide.
Hey Ryan, hey Ryan, this is Councilmember Sabito. Before you go to the next slide, I just have a quick question for you.
Okay.
On the levels 1, 2, and 3, you know, the healthcare and direct contact, are all of those in general or only if they're showing symptoms?
So the level 1 is only if they have been confirmed and they're treating confirmed patients. Level 2?
Even if the healthcare official is not showing symptoms, they'll still get tested, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then level 2 and 3?
Pardon me. Level 2 are those healthcare facilities or EMS personnel that may encounter a suspected case. So generally, your ambulance services, first responders such as police officers who are going to deal with suspected cases, healthcare officials, hospitals, and long-term care facilities who may encounter a suspected case. So that would pretty much be all healthcare officials who aren't actively treating tested cases at level 2.
Okay.
And then at level 3 are to fulfill requests of general patient needs at healthcare facilities. So say you had a regional clinic that wasn't dealing with tested patients for COVID, but they just had a general need for PPE because maybe their original PPE had been diverted to one of those level 1 or level 2s, then the priority would be that level 3 to make sure they had PPE to take care of general day-to-day health needs.
Okay. So even if they're not showing symptoms, they would still be tested in these various levels, correct?
Well, the levels are about providing PPE from the Strategic National Stockpile, and so the testing itself is completely up to the health officials to order that.
Okay.
The tests themselves, we didn't receive any tests from the Strategic National Stockpile. Those come straight from other stockpiles or third-party vendors.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And there's a lot of acronyms in all of this, and so sometimes it's clear as mud. We did send the city secretary's office a small pamphlet to distribute to each of y'all that is a guide, and we can provide additional follow-up if any of the acronyms or if you want further information to go deeper into the process.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Certainly. Next slide. And finally, there are some takeaways from this COVID-19 incident. In particular, it is that this has been a non-traditional emergency. Typically, the EOC deals with fire incidents such as the West Explosion or forest fires or grass fires. It's pretty common to see weather incidents such as tornadoes, even pipeline issues or major issues at large concerts or major venues. And in addition, they've trained on law enforcement activities such as terrorism, domestic terrorism, and large public gatherings. Fortunately, the EOC and all of our partners had or have trained on communicable disease preparation, including Ebola and SARS tabletops as recent as the last couple of years. They had also done extensive training in the Strategic National Stockpile distribution, and we had been identified as folks who had participated in that, and I think that led to our ability to get resources from the SNS. Normal incidents are usually affect a single jurisdiction, while this one has literally affected every jurisdiction in the county, state, and nation. This incident has been heavy on logistics rather than operations like you would see in a forest fire, grass fire, or some of those others that I mentioned. Because of that, the city manager's office has been having weekly conference calls with all of our other cities so that unnecessary duplication of efforts could be avoided. Additionally, we are seeking to take advantage of a change in the last legislative session that will allow extending law enforcement jurisdiction among the various law enforcement agencies in McLennan County and our adjacent counties. The authority that this council extended to the city manager will make entering into those necessary agreements much easier in this time of pressing need. The emergency operations center, as I mentioned just a minute ago, has also provided a guide to the EOC for elected officials that, if it hasn't already, will be distributed to each of you. And that's my update and available for any questions.
I just appreciate all the great work y'all are doing with the EOC, and thanks for this update. It helps us to understand better how that process is working. Dylan, did you have a question?
Click on the bottom. That's what happened to me, on the bottom.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thanks Hector and everyone for your patience. Chief, I know you mentioned that the testing, you talked about that a little bit, but if we're going to talk about this later, then that's fine, but you know, one question I had is, are we doing everything we can to procure testing? Because one of the things that I've heard, seems to be hearing in the news, is that in order for economies to reopen, there must be sufficient and adequate testing. I think my question would just be, you know, I know there's a lot of moving parts here, and what's the role of the local governments versus private healthcare providers versus the state governments versus federal governments? But I like the idea of doing everything we can to make sure that we have adequate, adequately pursued both virus testing and antibody testing. So is this the place to ask this question, or is this the question?
Well, we certainly address that. I think we're having near daily meetings with the healthcare professionals in the area, and I think city staff are working together to ensure that we are availing ourselves to the most opportunities to acquire testing opportunities. I think that we're being led by some great healthcare professionals in our community. We're lucky to have folks like Baylor Scott &amp; White and Ascension Providence to help lead us in that, as well as Dr. Griggs at the, at Public Health. And so I think we are asking those same questions on a daily basis, and we are endeavoring to do our very best to get the answers that are needed. We recognize that making those informed decisions are difficult without those results, and so as late as this morning, we were having conference calls about that, and the mayor has been in some of those and y'all. So we're endeavoring at every opportunity to get those additional tests and to identify the proper way to administer those so that it gives us the best answers. And we're relying heavily on the medical professionals to lead us in that, and then we're trying to fulfill those requests and really obligations from a local city management standpoint.
Same question for putting together contact tracing systems?
I'm gonna let ACM Emerson answer that one.
Councilmember, could you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. I was just curious to see what we're doing at the local government level to put into place, contact tracing, plans, and systems. Just knowing that, again, just based on some of the literature I've read, that having that lined up is going to be important for our ability to lift our order, reopen our economy. I know there's a lot of unknowns right now in terms of what our role will be with that, or at least I assume there is unknowns with that, but assuming that it's best to prepare for some of that burden to fall on us at the local level, I'm just wondering where we are on the developing contact tracing systems and procedures?
So our public health district currently has a contact tracing system in place. We currently have several staff that, and additional folks that have already been trained. We are developing a procedure to go broader throughout our city employee base to ensure that we have the appropriate number of staff trained. Our senior epidemiologist tells me that it is most appropriate to have at least one person per 10 so that you'd have enough to cover that base, and so it is a real extensive process that they are doing daily right now. I think so far, they've already traced or monitored at least 186 folks that they've been doing since we started this process or more. So the health district does have a process in place, and it has put the parameters in place to provide additional training. It's in fact, they're trying to develop a train-the-trainer process so that we are fully prepared should we need a different level or a much larger community of tracers or monitors in place.
Awesome. I think my goal is just, or I think something to consider would be that to the extent any of these obligations fall on us, we're prepared to be able to tell our community, you know, when we're ready and healthcare providers say it's safe for our order to lift and our economy to reopen, we have the testing infrastructure as well as the contact tracing capacity or systems in place that we can be quick to reopen when our numbers are right, the curve is flattened, healthcare providers say we're good to go. You know, again, the testing and the contact tracing are some of the things that it seems like we need to have in place, so I'm excited that we're moving on both of those things to make sure that we can open up our economy, that we can lift this order as soon as possible and still be done in a safely manner. And I want to make that caveat. That's a big caveat. I definitely don't think we need to prematurely lift the order, or we don't need to prematurely open the economy if it's not safe, but assuming it is, and assuming I think it's going to be important to have this infrastructure in place. So I appreciate staff's efforts to pursue those ends.
Any other, thank you, Dylan. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir. I also want to thank staff for the presentation to Assistant City Manager Emerson and Assistant City Manager Holt for making the presentation. Can we go back to the first slide, please, where we have the number of tests that have been done thus far? If you don't mind, please. So as of, you know, in, I was saying about, the bottom statistic, are we saying that 2,100 tests have been completed since Saturday?
That should be through that date, not since.
Okay, okay, okay. So through since, okay. So even in spite of that, out of approximately 2,100 tests that have been completed, only 78 have shown active, and so I think that's a real good story to tell people. I know there's been some questions about, you know, how many tests have we done thus far? How many tests are we doing on a daily basis? But you know, it's very good for the community to see that testing is still being done on a daily basis. Testing is still being done when people are showing symptoms or they've been around individuals that have tested positive. And in spite of that, we've been very fortunate that 78 cases have shown positive, but even out of that, 78, 61 have recovered. And so I'm very grateful for the numbers that are here before us today because obviously we hear about other parts in the country that have been hit a lot harder than McLennan County, and so it seems that, you know, that I want to thank the people that have really hunkered down on the shelter in place and only gone out when they've gone to work out of necessity, or they've gone to the grocery store. For the most part, people have stayed at home, and I just want to show that, you know, the shelter in place, while a lot of maybe people questioned it at the beginning, it has paid off. It is doing well, and so by no means am I saying that the fight is over. I still think that there's quite a fight ahead of us right now, but it seems to be paying off, and I want people to be encouraged to see that testing is still being done and the cases that are showing positive aren't as high, but even those that are showing positive, the majority by a huge number are recovering, and so this is kudos to my fellow council members for their And so this is kudos to my fellow council members for their wisdom and tenacity for our senior staff at City Hall. And then also for all of our first responders and medical personnel that have just worked so diligently and so hard to make sure that our community will be ready to open up in a safe manner, but still try to contain COVID-19 to the smallest sector of the population. And so I just really want to say thank you to everyone for all of their hard work.
Oh, this is Holmes here. I'll echo Councilman Sabido on that. Thank you for everybody for putting this data together. The one, the one number on this page that just screams out to me is the 13 active cases, which when you put that in the context of, I think we almost got up to 40 active cases in the county and now it's back down to 13. And when you match that with a number that's not on here, which is hospitalized cases and ICU cases, we've seen that come down too. And again, Hector, you said it well. Thank you for the businesses and everybody, everybody's buy-in on the stay at home. I think we've done a great job in Waco of containing the virus and mitigating the effects thereof. The trends are all going the right direction. And again, not to say that this, if and when we open back up, we should expect to maybe see possibly going back up with the number of people out and about. But the containment measures that we put in place, I think, have been working. And again, I appreciate council, staff, the citizens of Waco for making this work.
Mayor, before we leave this topic, I did want to make sure that our citizens and community folks know the extent to, that we've dived even deep. What is the proper verb tense of that? We dove even deeper. Is that right? Oh, whatever. On the breakdown for, we started the discussion at last council meeting about the increase in racial disparity regarding COVID-19 in our country. So with the assistance of the Equity Group that the McClinney County Health District has and had prior to COVID-19, the establishment of a race equity group with the Family Health Center since COVID-19. What we've, we had a conversation the other day and Dr. Griggs offered the demographic data of that they've been taking just in the past week. So it's not from the entire span of the testing dates, but in the past week there were of the screened positive or of the tests, it was 56% Anglo, 46% African American and 38% Latino that were tested in their outdoor clinic. And I think that we will continue to monitor this. We will continue to look at it. We will continue to study it to ensure that regardless of what's happening in our country, that we are mindful of the inequities that people of color experience in healthcare. And we've taken a dedicated effort and position to deal with this even post-COVID-19. So I think that's something that has allowed, one of the, one of the things that has allowed the layers to peel back. And hopefully we will never unsee and never not know and are prepared to deal with going forward in everything that we do in healthcare. So I was incredibly appreciative to those staff members who have led those efforts and worked with those efforts, our community for standing up with it. Organizations that will enlist our community influencers to step up and be educated in healthcare so they can continue to sound the horn and do the things that are important in getting past COVID-19 and not just, you know, the things that will keep them safe, but being mindful to advocate on your own behalf for your wellness. You know, because, you know, we are incredibly pleased with the test numbers, but we know that there are some flaws in the testing and we don't want to lose sight of that. So I mean, not with no intention of being Debbie Downer, but I understand that we need to just look at this as from a broad perspective and make sure that we're putting all of it in it because it's not over yet. And we want to be mindful to take care of our people as best we can. And I am ever appreciative for our healthcare workers, our public service, public servants who are putting it, putting their all into this effort, our city management staff and especially that, those at the McClinney County Health District for their work.
Thank you, Andre. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? And Andre is right there. We've talked about the flaws in the testing and the fact that there has been a lack of adequate testing. There continues to be a lack of adequate testing despite some things that some politicians are saying. And having adequate testing is certainly an important part of being able to come out of this shelter in place order. And so we are going to have to be really smart about this. The latest data is showing that there may be two or three waves of COVID-19. And Singapore is starting to experience a second wave. And we'll have the benefit of watching other countries and other states as we work on this and try to be as smart as we can as we come out of this. I think that's all we have for this work session item. We can just move directly into the next one, which is a brief update from each of the COVID-19 community working teams. I want to recommend to the public, if you have not seen, if you did not see the work session that we did at the April 7th meeting where these teams talked in detail about the work that they were doing, which is outstanding. You should go to covidwaco.com and the video of those work sessions is available there. You can look at the entire thing or you can break it down. It's broken down by each work team. So that's such a great description that was given there that I would recommend that you go and look at that. But I'll turn it over to Dylan now to introduce this topic because he's been working to coordinate the work of four teams. Dylan?
Good afternoon. I am, can you get out of the way really briefly, really quickly here? Let others talk. Again, this is going to be a really quick update. I've provided a summary to the city staff who are going to post a more comprehensive summary of the work that we have been doing. These working groups have been doing on our website. So this will be a high level for the public to kind of hear some of the stuff that's going on. But there will be a more in-depth summary posted to our website for the public to see. I just want to say how thankful and proud I am to be a part of a community where we have council members and community leaders who have rolled up their sleeves and gone to work in such an excellent way. The work that is being done is collaborative, strategic and proactive. And we are a part of a city that does not wait for things to happen to us, but says, what are we going to do to make sure that we are thinking ahead, planning for the future and doing everything we can to make sure the lives of our citizens is best? So with that, I will turn it over to Holmes because his microphone is unmuted already. So that'll just be easy for him to start. And we'll let him take it away. He's part of the Business and Individual Recovery Working Group. So take it away, Jim.
Yeah, thanks Dylan. Can, can you hear me okay? I think on the last one I was not led, you couldn't hear me quite well. Thanks Dylan. Again, let's make my comments very brief here. Part of the Business and Individual Recovery Team Task Force, Sarah Roberts is my co-chair. I apologize to those of you tuned in to see Sarah Roberts. She is not, I'm going to be doing the rundown today, not her. But a great co-chair. We've had so much outreach through her and the three chamber heads, John Bible, Alfred Solano, Matt Medders and Chris Collins. Them and John Passavant with the Startup Waco. The outreach there and the existing infrastructure we have to serve the business community has been tremendous. We've had seven meetings so far internally and a lot externally with business groups and industry groups over the last couple of weeks. The big thing that we are focusing on is the $2 trillion CARES package, the federal package, and as it affects Waco and Central Texas and how we get that spread into our business community as best we can. As most people know, the two major programs there, the EIDL, Emergency Injury Disaster Loans and the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP that everybody's hearing about. The PPP has the forgivable nature of it that is that we're trying to get as many dollars into the communities as we can in that program. The $350 billion, Waco's portion, the part that we got processed into Waco, that 350 was up or expired. It was all used last Thursday. We're hopeful that another 250 to 300 to 300 billion will be approved by Congress this week. And again, I want to salute the community banks and the SD, the small business development corporations here in Waco for getting that out to as many people as possible because it's capital consumptive for those banks. And it's actually federal money coming in, but it's the local banks that are carrying the liquidity of this thing. So I want to salute the leadership of the community banks. And we're coaching up people on how to get into this second round too. Again, the outreach of getting the word out from the chambers and Startup Waco has been very helpful. On the other side, the Texas Workforce Commission has a shared work plan and there's unemployment guidance too on the, on the individual recovery that we're trying to get the word out. And on top of that, we've got really creative programs going on in here, Waco. Creative Waco being one of them. Make It In Waco Plan that I think maybe some of the other councilmen will talk about too. I guess we're all taking credit for these great programs that are coming up organically. And then the Waco delivers with the restaurants as they are getting the food to the customers and the orders to the customers. The third big point that I want to talk about is the governor's message from last Friday and how we are kind of pivoting a little bit into, obviously making sure that these federal programs are all reached by the local, the local economy. And then also as the governor talked about incrementally staging reopening of businesses, how we, how we communicate that to the, to the business community and to the citizens. You know, hospitals going back to elective surgery. We think that's, that's going to be better for the hospital industry, obviously. The retail to go, how exactly that works and how that is laid out starting this Friday will be, will be interesting. And I think it'll help people kind of get back into the swing of getting their businesses open. All with standards of social distancing, of course, but driven by doctors and data. And we're trying to encourage businesses to their online marketplaces, which is kind of a part of this Creative Waco deal. But as many businesses that can work online and retail and bricks and mortar as well, we think that'll be helpful in the long run. And lastly, Dylan, I just want to say, we, we talked at last council meeting about local small business resources and maybe trying to help those folks that fall between the cracks of the PPP. We're still studying the feasibility of that and making sure that we have the capital availability and the structure to maybe roll something like that out. That's, that's kind of the highlights of my group. Again, thanks to Sarah Roberts with KSR Consulting and the chamber presidents and John Passavant. And actually Commissioner Perry, Ben Perry has joined our group as kind of a permanent member too. The input of all those guys is helping, helping this task force and helping the, helping the city Waco too.
Thanks Jim. Any questions for Jim? All right. We will move on next to Councilmember Bearfield to give us an update on social services and education working team.
Thank you, Councilmember Make. Good afternoon, everyone. We have had a interesting several couple of weeks in working with the Social Services and Education work team. And I would like to highlight and celebrate Suzie Painter-March, who is the CEO of Prosper Waco, who is an amazing co-chair for this, this group and has done the lion's share of this work and gathering things together. When the mayor put us to work and put us to task, we established quickly, you know, what our goals were and to provide a method to facilitate communications about these issues related to COVID-19, help us engage our community partners to address these issues and provide better leadership and communication to those important issues as we work through the crisis and move towards recovery. You know, real quick, we had to identify and clarify the problem, identify and convene the players, change and add the new process and clearly take one, one step towards our solution. And those people and organizations that we, and issues that we were dealing with included childcare for essential workers, our women and infant, women and infant and children, which is our WIC office, because there was a need for formula. Elder care in the community, medical needs for the homeless should they become positive. Shelter, shelter capacity and mobile charging stations for homeless. School meals and onsite delivery, family meal insecurity, alternative education. What was our faith community dealing with and what were the functional challenges and policy discrepancies within the faith community? Volunteer coordination and our immigrant and Spanish-speaking populations. Where we are, the women, infant and children, baby formula access and supply chain. We found that with the daycares and EOAC closing, that the formula supply was interrupted. So there wasn't a national shortage, but it was just a bind locally because with the rush for people to purchase food and things at the store, the formula that were WIC approved went first. And so what happened, we redeployed our WIC bands, our WIC mobiles, as I like to call them, and set up a site at the McClinney County Health District and made those things available. There were Facebook groups created and messages going back and forth, texting chains, people just taking care of one another. And so we were able to get resources swapped amongst clients and available to those mothers. Our elder care, we were consistently monitoring and coordinating with the harder Texas Council of Government, with Meals on Wheels and other elder care agencies to make sure that if they need to resupply volunteers in, you know, any policies that they have, we're able to communicate with them and get what they need. Our homeless needs for medical services and our isolation site. We determined that we, and at that time, and from what I know even today, there are no positive tests amongst our homeless community. But we needed to make sure that if there were, we had a way to isolate them and continue care for those positive cases, if there were any, and what to do carrying on. We were able to coordinate with our homeless coalition and very grateful for, for our city staff that is dedicated to being a, serving as liaison with the homeless coalition and working with them to determine with, with the homeless coalition, with City of Waco's continuum of care, the EOC and the various shelters, we have worked out a very streamlined way to get that tested. They have a site selected. We, with the work that Assistant City Manager Emerson and Aileen Price have done in, in finding additional resources for, for our homeless organizations because they have now gone from eight hours of care to 24 hours of care during the shelter in place order. We have been able to find some additional resources for them. So we're really, really pleased with the progress that we made. We're not done, but we're pleased that procedures have been put in place. Our meal site, our school meal sites, we have, Waco ISD is continuing to do the things that they need to do. They have included dinner in their meals that they provide daily for, for the children and been working with the Texas Hunger Initiative staff. They have been doing an amazing work, not only for our state and our community, but even across the country of getting young people fed during this time, which is, which is a pretty amazing feat. And we've, we've, we've increased those. They, to not have people coming back and forth, they have done pickup for one time a day. So at that, at that day, you get your lunch, dinner and breakfast for the next day. And then you come back the following day. So they're trying to make sure that, that the children's meals, they're getting all the meals that they are qualifying for, but without having to come back and forth and have that interaction to keep them safe. Our Faith Alliance leaders have been working diligently and communicating. I would like to specifically thank Mayor Dever and County Judge Felton for hearing them. It was really important that, that they, they knew that our city leadership was with them and hearing the concerns that they had as, as faith leaders, as ministers, as pastors. And that was one of the things that, that the comments that I've gotten just continually, that they felt heard. And so I wanted you to know that, sir, especially in this conversation and pass that on to Judge Felton as well. But in the process, they've had several Zoom meetings and up to 150 minutes, faith leaders on the call. We want to shout out to Liz Legawa with Central Texas Center Faith Alliance. Um, we want to, uh, shout out to Liz Legawa with, uh, Central, Central Texas Center Faith Alliance, um, for the work that she's done in coordinating the pastors. Um, they have, uh, developed a clergy pledge and they signed on to articulate a common commitment to staying at home. So their peers, so they, they have peer support in staying at home. Um, there have been, uh, uh, shared resources in how to go online and have your service, how to collect, um, offerings. And, and if you haven't had an established, uh, online giving program, they have done that. And we're really, um, uh, satisfied and pleased with the work that they've done together and the collaborative efforts that have been made with all of the organizations. They are then also working with the Family Health Center to, like I said in my comments earlier, to be more educated and engaged in, 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 in healthcare and COVID-19 and how we, how we can get, they can serve as, um, influencers within their community and within their, their churches to assist their parishioners in advocating for their best healthcare. So we, they have really stood up and done quite a bit, the faith leaders have. We wanted to talk about, we have, uh, with the assistance of the Cooper Foundation, uh, Spanish Language Call Center has been, uh, mounted in partnership with, uh, La Puerta Ministry and, uh, which currently services immigrants and Spanish speakers and education job training referral services. And they've, they stepped up to fill in that, in, in the call center's needs. And so we really appreciate them. Um, their staffing, the call center will require two more full-time people and some technology. So, um, let's see. We have to, we're, we're working on getting all of those kinks, um, ironed out, but we're really pleased to see that our non-English speakers will also have access to information and resources during COVID-19. The, we've been working with our, um, higher education, uh, in- uh, institutions in Waco to see what it is that, that they are, if they need any assistance from us. Um, we know that Baylor has about a hundred students still on campus and those, uh, and that their food pantry is, is active and engaged and that they're getting the things that they need. Also reaching out to our McClinney Community College students and our TSTC students to encourage them to not, not, not be, um, saddened or, or, or set aside at this, this pause in their life. I mean, no one intended to, to not do a whole semester of school, but you know, here we are. And so we keep them encouraged and not distracted to get off task and to continue to further and foster their education. We, uh, Suzy and I will be meeting with them, uh, towards the end of this week to see if there are any efforts that we can do. But outside of, I know that we've done some kind of PSAs, just encouraging them to keep going. Uh, whichever manner that the education folks are having, we want to continue to, for them to keep going. I think that's about it. We have, um, Prosper Waco has, um, um, done a great deal in, in getting coordinating efforts. And thank you for allowing us to, to share that information, uh, Councilmember Sabido, with your strategic communications, uh, group. And that's the way we all stay connected and stay together. And I, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Councilmember Bearfield?
Uh, no questions, but I do want to thank you for, uh, mentioning the call with, uh, the faith leaders, with Judge Felton and myself. I really appreciated that opportunity and appreciate Liz Legawa for making that happen, uh, for, for organizing it. Uh, and really I just, I mostly appreciate those faith leaders for the positions they've taken with their, uh, congregations. You know, they are the trusted leaders in the community. And so being able to have them, uh, speak to their congregations about how important it was to stay home and not come to church, uh, really, really important. And I think those, that's one of the big reasons for the results we've had, uh, in our community, in our county so far.
Without question, without question. And I know it was hard for them during Holy Week, um, and, and, you know, but we did make it. Um, I know I went to four Easter services on Easter, so, and, and, and had my fascinator on. So we were ready and we, we did everything we needed to do in line, but we did it safely at home. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bearfield. Uh, I will now, uh, hand it over to Councilmember Canard.
Thank you Dylan. And again, I will be brief because, uh, my cohort on this task force, Dr. Griggs gets to, uh, will be at the press conference tomorrow at 1:30 with the judge and the mayor and, uh, is much more eloquent than me in describing all of the work that we have been doing. Uh, but just to, you know, and EOC did a good, he gives you a report that preceded ours, did a good report of kind of where we are numbers wise, as well as trend wise. Uh, it does seem, and as the mayor has indicated, you know, globally, we're seeing maybe second and third, you know, second waves and more. And for this initial wave here locally, we have done a fantastic job and I want to commend everyone in the community for, uh, adhering to our orders and doing their best to physically distance and, uh, and help us flatten this curve and keep the spread of this virus as mitigated as we've been able to do. And so, you know, the systems, our health systems have plenty of capacity. The, it seems the trend is in our favor at this point, again, for the, this, this first wave of the virus that we've, that we've been able to hopefully are on the other side, getting to the other side of. Um, and so, a- and so as we're going forward on this and with the numbers are saying what they're saying, uh, you know, both at the federal and state level, we're getting some indications of, of beginning to reopen the economy. And locally, our health task force, uh, is gathering data and information to help advise us as policymakers on ways to go about doing that uh, in phases that is safe and that makes sense for our community, um, as well as, uh, to the points of the questions before, from, uh, testing capabilities, uh, again, we recognize there is a shortage nationwide of those. We are making requests however we can to find additional ones. In the meantime, we are also hopeful of, we'll be working, uh, with our health systems to, uh, a- as we begin this phase reopening over the next, you know, over, over, you know, the coming weeks and months, um, to, to identify any other sorts of data we can collect, uh, to give us an indication that, uh, that the, the virus isn't resurging and there isn't a second spike coming. Um, and we're hoping to find creative, innovative ways to, to do that, to give us the information we need, um, to, to make sure that we're doing the job we need to do locally for that. And, and so, and to that are, uh, again, to Dylan, to your question about contact tracing. Again, the, the health district has put in place, uh, adequate capacity now, uh, with the ability to ramp up significantly should the need arise. Um, because we understand that, again, data, understanding how prevalent it is and then be, being able to go out and con- and identify and contact and follow up with, uh, those confirmed cases and those monitoring is, uh, is an important, is an important step to make sure that this virus doesn't, uh, have a resurgence within our community. And to that, the only other thing I would add is that as, you know, the governor has, uh, indicated over the, you know, in a few days, the non-essential medical procedures will begin to grow and be, be allowed in, in some capacity as well. Uh, the message from our healthcare providers is just that, uh, while, you know, a- after that order had, had started and all of the essential stu- and all non-essential stuff had kind of been shut down, everybody in our community with chronic conditions, uh, please call your physician, please call your doctor. We're wanting to make sure that those that have, you know, whether it be diabetes, COPD, any of those other chronic issues that not only put them more at risk for, uh, COVID, but also just more at risk health-wise in general, um, are getting the care that they need, uh, because that's, that's a critical component of our overall public health. Uh, is to make sure that, uh, that those chronic conditions, the needs of that, of those with those, uh, issues are, are being met. Um, and so that's, and so that's where we are. Um, it's, I, I, again, I just want to thank Dr. Griggs and all of his work, along with the other Baylor Scott and Wyandotte Institute of Providence, um, Premier R, you know, AMS, like, uh, A- AMR, I mean, it has been a, I mean, everyone has, has been working, uh, around the clock to, to make sure that our response to this, um, pandemic has been as coordinated, as robust and as effective as possible. And so again, for this first wave, it looks like we're on the other side, um, and we're going to continue to work to, uh, just to get us, get us through this and get us into the next phase of, um, of dealing with this issue. Thanks.
Great. Any questions for Councilmember Canard?
I do. I just have a quick question. Councilmember Canard, thank you so much for your presentation and your, um, recap. I do have a question that I've been receiving and I don't know, um, if it would come from your task force to recommendation, but as the economy begins to open up again and as even this week, more businesses are opening up again, is there a recommendation? And I, you know, I know the still social distancing is known as, uh, Washington has, et cetera, but in other parts of our country, we've seen maybe even some requirements of wearing a mask while out in public. Do you foresee that recommendation coming in our community as well?
Well, I mean, the, the mask recommendation has come from the CDC and is, is pretty much nationwide for everybody. Um, and so that's something that I know our local health officials would echo, um, that is still important. And, and I, and as we, as we kind of work through this reopening phasing, um, there'll be guidelines associated with the, the risk that we see for each kind of levels of the, of the virus within our community that we'll, so, i- in some instances, masks may still be highly recommended, um, or even required to go into some areas, uh, or if, if we see a lower incidence down the road, maybe we could kind of loosen up on those requirements or strong suggestions. So it's, it's going to be, it's going, it's, it's fluid, but right now, um, the CDC nationwide recommends that everyone, if you're out in public, um, particularly in areas where you cannot control who you're around to wear a mask.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would certainly urge that everyone in Waco, wear a mask when they're going in. Certainly, certainly when you're going into the grocery store and places that are populated. Um, but even when you're, uh, in areas that are a little less populated, if you can't keep six feet away from people, you really need to be wearing some kind of face covering. And, uh, there are, just about anything will, will be better than nothing.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you, Councilmember Canard, and we will wrap it up with Councilmember Sabido and the communications team.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor and staff. I'm so excited to be here and present to you guys today. I just want to give a quick recap of what our, um, group is doing and, uh, I don't want to rub it in my other council members faces, but I think we have a fun group here. And so I'm excited to present today. I, I am co-chairing this group with Natalie Klinske, the Director of Communications from the Waco Foundation. And I'm sure like my other council members would say, our, our cultures are probably, uh, a lot better. And, and they, they're definitely the stronger partner of the duo. And so I just want to give kudos to her while I'm on here. Uh, but I just want to highlight two of our goals. Uh, we talked about this last, but I just want to highlight two of our goals that we have is to distribute fact-based information in both English and Spanish to our community via identified channels, um, and to develop method for communication between key partner entities. Uh, we have developed key partners here, not only in our city, but through our county as well. That include the City of Waco, the City Manager's Office, the Public Health District, uh, McClinney County as a whole, um, other surrounding areas that would include like the City of Hewitt, City of Marina, City of Bellmead, uh, higher education institutions, Baylor, MCC, TSTC, and of course, many of the ISDs that are located in our county. Uh, some of the things that are, we, we are, we have been working on are weekly Zoom meetings on Mondays and Thursdays that we meet, uh, twice a week. And I've even invited most of my, uh, fellow council members to come and present some of the work that their task force is doing, um, which have been very beneficial and helpful to the entire group. Uh, we've also, uh, have been very grateful for the launch of waco covid.com and McClinney County covid.com, which has a lot of great information, uh, that we push through, um, uh, our, our different channels of, of communication. And then we have an, uh, e-newsletter that goes out twice a week, uh, English and Spanish. We cover a lot of, um, wonderful topics, uh, Councilmember Bearfield talking about the faith pledge that the local, uh, faith, uh, leaders took. And we put that on there, employment opportunities that are in our county, uh, even resources for parents that are home with school, dealing with emotional health, mental health, um, social distancing and what that looks like, uh, supporting local businesses. We include local stats, stats as far as like how many people have, have tested positive in our county for COVID-19. And even Councilmember Canar mentioned about, um, if you have another commit, uh, because of the focus of COVID-19, there have been some people in our community that probably aren't putting their other health issues on the front line, which are very important. And so still encouraging people to make sure that they're taking care of their health outside of COVID-19. So, so, so there's some of the things that we've, uh, incorporated into our newsletter. And so we're very happy that, to see the count on our newsletter keeps going up day after day after day. So the word of, of getting it out, um, is, is definitely circulating. Some new projects that we're working on is in collaboration with Startup Waco, we're working with the community calendar to talk about different dates that are going to be taking place of, for example, uh, this Friday, the retail to go, it goes into effect. Um, as of right now, April 30th, the shelter in place in McClinney County is, is over. So different count, different dates like that, uh, you will be able to see on our website. You will be able to, uh, disseminate that information by edu- categories of education, commerce, uh, press releases, et cetera, things like that. So the average person is not, uh, flooded with all types of information possibly that they're not looking for. So we're trying to make it very user-friendly. Um, we are also going to be, uh, thank you to Larry Hosey and the Public Information Office. We're going to be recording some PSAs from the surrounding, uh, local city managers and commissioners. So this week we have, uh, the City Manager of City of Bellmead to come in and do a PSA, uh, the City Manager of Lorena to come in and do a PSA, uh, Dr. McCowen from MCC, et cetera, things like that, just to say, hey, remember practice social distancing. We'll get through this, uh, we'll get through this together. Uh, we're flattening the curve and just really, um, a, a feel-good message that we want to get out to our community members. And then also thanks to Larry Holley, uh, coming up, we'll start scheduling weekly TV and radio interviews to talk about some of the news that's going around COVID-19. Um, one of the things that we really wanted to focus, even though COVID-19, there's a huge health component to this, but we also know there is also other issues that's, that surround COVID-19, whether it be social services or, uh, business recovery. And as we talk about the recovery of COVID-19, what does that look like for our community? So we'll be taking this message out to, uh, the majority of the county and the city to really get this message out. And so, um, I might be reaching out to some of my fellow council members for interviews. I hope you're up for it. But those are some of the new initiatives that we're working on in strategic communication that really just help get the word out as far as what is going on in the work that the City of Waco is doing. So with that, I will open it up with any questions.
Any questions for Councilmember Sabido? All right, guys. I just want to say again, thank you so much. And I really want to thank just the global city of Waco. I did, thank you, um, we don't get the credit here. I think the goal of, um, these working groups, uh, is to bring some organization and structure in the midst of a chaotic crisis. And, um, I want to thank the frontline workers, the healthcare providers, public safety, essential businesses. These council members, our city staff, the nonprofit sector, communities of faith, the business community and our chambers of commerce for all really coming together, um, in this moment to be strategic and proactive. Uh, your city is not idly sitting by. They are working hard collaboratively and proactively to make sure that we will come out of this stronger than we were before. And I am very thankful, uh, to get to play a small role in that. So, uh, with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor and, uh, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you Dylan. I, I, I want to thank all the members of the working teams, uh, you, the council members and your, your co-chairs, as well as, uh, everybody that's, that's been working together. I knew the work would be great, but it's just continues to exceed expectations. Uh, Dylan just said, uh, a really important thing, and that is that the key partners were already doing great work. And we're not trying to take any credit for that work, uh, but we do all do better when we collaborate. And, uh, we're trying to just shine a spotlight on that great work that, that they are doing and bringing a few more resources to it. You know, as we start to look towards, as this council and the Commissioners Court starts to look towards a strategic phased easing of our order, uh, the work that these groups are doing will be a, will be hugely important. And we will be looking to these groups for guidance, uh, in addition to the other, uh, experts that we will be working with, uh, to give us guidance on how we, uh, how we move out of this in a, in a responsible and smart, uh, and strategic way. And finally, I want to say, uh, the same thing that several of you have already said, and that is just a huge thanks to our citizens for the great work that they have done in obeying our shelter in place orders, uh, and the, the positive moves that they have made that have kept our county in such a, uh, relatively good place with this disease. With that, I will turn it back over to Wiley for the next work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, um, I, one of the great things about this job is I get to work with some people that really know what they're doing. And through this, uh, through this, um, challenge that we've had with COVID-19, our staff has done a great job keeping the city running. And I'm really incredibly proud of that. And, uh, the two folks that are going to talk to you this afternoon about, uh, the council's street program and give you an update on that have done an absolutely fab- fabulous job keeping that program moving and, uh, getting some great work done to bring our streets back up to the standard that the council wants to see. Uh, and so we have Jim Reed, our Street Division Manager with us this afternoon and Cody Patello, Project Engineer. And I think Jim's going to start this off. And I think Jim's going to start this off and give you all an update on your street program. Jim?
And you don't have to sit at the mic. Please pick it up so you can sit here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Essie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Jim Reed. I'm the Streets Division Manager for the City of Waco Public Works Department. I'm joined today by Mr. Cody Patello. Cody is Engineering Manager for the Streets Division and is responsible for the program delivery of all pavement management projects. We're excited to be with you today to discuss your pavement management program. The presentation shall consist of, first, the overall live status of our 626 centerline miles of streets, a summary of our active planning and construction projects underway with the $28-plus million obligated by council in FY '20. And finally, there we will share the strategies targeted for moving forward as we rapidly plan for FY '21 funding and the development of five-year outlook looking forward into the future. Next one. Thank you. Before you, as a live dashboard report pulled for March 5, 2020. As you might remember, when council was first briefed about the condition assessment of the city network of streets, we were looking at PCI score of 51.4 that was steadily deteriorating by three to five points per year. During the first year of the council's pavement management program, my office reported on March 1, 2019, a new live value of 45.5. Recent live reporting indicates a turning of the curve to a positive value of 47.4. This next slide created in our pavement management software provides a better overview of the curb trend. Please keep in mind that we have 11 active projects under construction today, with at least eight being completed later this summer. That shall impact this positive trend. The pavement team goal remains to reach a network score of 70. No question, we have a ways to go. Our strategic analyst team was able to create this graphic indicator showing the best means to get there. All indications is that by the close of FY '20, an overall network score of 50.6 can be achieved. If beginning in FY '21, we can find a means to fund 35 million a year across the nine-year window, we can get close or exceed our goal of 70. I do not want to misguide anyone that funding creates a means. But what I would say is one major influence is building an internal operations team that addresses daily work maintenance. All the fundamental treatments listed here, crack seal, base repair, concrete repair, are integral parts of the council's pavement management program. Our operations team also manages contracts related to routine maintenance, such as crack sealing. Managing contracts to ensure every dollar is applied and directed to get the most from the work is essential. Recently, our operations team provided oversight of a million-dollar crack seal effort and brought it in on time and well under budget at a cost savings just under $400,000. In addition, our operations team has done an excellent job of keeping positions filled during FY '20. We brought on nine new employees and, more importantly, retained those employees, a real problem we have faced over the years. The performance details provided on this slide demonstrates the overall accomplishments of our in-house forces projected from FY '19 to FY '20. All line items highlighted in yellow are integral pieces needed to support a sound pavement score. Special attention should be paid to the line item potholes repaired. With the council's pavement management program, we worked with the operations team to identify street segments needing reoccurring pothole repair. With this detail, we were able to move these street segments into the program, repair those streets, and reduce the number of routine areas in the city needing attention with pothole repair. No question, 626 centerline miles of maintenance is a challenge, but with the council's support during the budget process, we have expanded both the number of street personnel and our inventory of essential equipment. At this point, I shall turn the next portion of this presentation to Mr. Patello to provide a summary of our active planning and construction projects underway with the $28-plus million authorized in FY '20 by our council.
Thank you, Jim. So as we mentioned before, the preservation treatment is the most important treatment in our toolbox for the pavement management program. This allows us to keep our good streets in good condition and prolong the life of those streets. Some recent projects that we did with the year one of our program were subdivisions such as Sun West and Hollywood, where we're able to get in, preserve those streets that are already in good condition and get in and get out pretty quickly. For this year, we have two projects that are for our preservation treatment. We have the micro-surface and slurry seal. This project is 2.5 street miles with an estimate of $2.6 million. The bids were opened earlier this year with a low bid being Missouri Petroleum. The bids came in a little bit lower than the estimates, about $2.48 million, and the construction began in March of 2020. The second project is the 2020 Street Preservation Seal Coat Project. Seal Coat is a treatment we use on rural streets that don't have a curb and gutter as it's the really the best treatment for those type of streets and where micro slurry might not be. For this, it's a 2.8 street miles. The construction estimate was $649,000. And bids opened earlier this year as well. The bids came in, the low bidder was Knife River at $566,000, and construction is slated to start in late April of 2020. Here we have an overall map of the preservation for this year. If you look to your bottom right-hand corner, you have a legend that is color-coded for activity. Orange, you have micro-surface. Brown, you have slurry seal. And green, you have seal coat. Moving on to some of our combination projects, Fifth Street Improvements Project, that is a project that we had, starting with a year one of our program. It was about a 12-month design with CPY that we are wrapping, that has been wrapped up. Bids have been opened as well. This is 1.1 street mile, street miles with a combination product project that has a street, storm, sewer, and storm storm water. The construction estimate was 9.6 million. As I mentioned, bids have been opened early April. The low bidder was TTG Utilities. Their bid was a little bit under our estimate at 9.1 million. The construction bid for the streets portion of this project was 3.3 million. And construction is anticipated to start in June of 2020. We do have, we do anticipate pushing an item forward for future consideration to award this contract. Fourth Street Improvements Project is a project that's a sister project to Fifth Street. It it is currently with CPY for preliminary design. It is 1.1 street miles with a construction estimate of about 11.7 million. And that is slightly higher than Fifth Street as we are addressing all these side streets from Waco Drive to IH 35 in between Fifth and Fourth. And so, like I said, we are in preliminary design. Once we finish that, we'll move to a final design with CPY. The construction estimate for the streets portion is about 4.76 million. And this this construction is anticipated to start April of 2022. With but with that, we do want to be flexible as we don't want the Fourth Street and the Fifth Street project going on at the same time. So we want to get this project, the design wrapped up so we can we can be strategic with when we start Fourth Street. Again, as you see, we in between Fourth and Fifth, from Waco Drive to 35, we will be improving all those side streets to to wrap up that corridor. Moving on to some of our Mill and Overlay projects, we have the 2019 Mill and Overlay Phase Two. This is an in-house design. These are some streets that were left over from the year one of our program that are wrapping up. It is 7.7 street miles with a construction estimate of 3.4 million and construction anticipated to start in June of 2020. Lake Shore Drive improvements, this is really a phase two of our Lake Shore Drive plan. We, year one, we had Lake Shore Drive, which was from Wooded Acres to 19th. And this year, we're extending that from 19th up to Martin Luther King. This is 3.4 street miles with a construction estimate of about 1.9 million. And construction is anticipated to start in July of 2020. Texas Central Parkway Improvement Project is a project that was identified by our pavement management software as a very high-value project for our PCI and a project that was in need of immediate needs. This is a 4.1 street mile project, and the construction estimate is about 3.1 million. We are at 30% in design with our in-house team, and we anticipate construction beginning as early as August 2020. And here's an overall map of the streets just discussed. Washington Avenue Conversion, this is a project that council has seen quite a few times. It's the two-way conversion from University Parks to 18th with that protected bike lane from University Parks to 11th. This is 1.4 street miles. This is currently with our purchasing department for bids, to receive bids, and we should receive bids late April. The construction estimate for this project is 4.5 million, with the street portion of that being estimated to be about 2.9 million. And construction is anticipating to start as early as June 2020. Franklin Avenue Conversion is another project that council has been made aware of. We are currently with contracted with Walker Partners to do preliminary design on this street. And once we finish up that preliminary design and we have a configuration that we think would be a best fit, we'll we'll bring that forward and make a decision on that and move towards a final design. The early construction estimates are very similar to Washington, about 4.5 million, with the street portion being about 2.1 million. We anticipate construction to begin as early as April 2021. But along with Fourth and Fifth, we want, we don't want these two streets to be under construction at the same time. So we are going to, we be strategic with when that construction begins on Franklin Avenue. Moving on to some of our reclamation projects, the 2019 Street Reclamation is another set of streets that were left over from the year one of our program that are wrapping up. It is 3.4 street miles with a construction estimate at 1.7 million. Our in-house team is at about a 60% design right now, and we anticipate construction to begin in August of 2020. The 2019 Street Reclamation Phase Two project, this was a set of streets that were in a Mill and Overlay package we had or in the Mill and Overlay category. And as we started with design and getting geotech information, we realized that Mill and Overlay was not the best treatment for these streets. And so we moved those out and moved those to a reclamation treatment as it was more appropriate to get the life that we really want out of these streets. It is 3.3 street miles with a construction estimate close to $3 million. And I would say that whenever we had this in the Mill and Overlay, that construction estimate was around 1 million. So you can see that as we get to the streets that are in good condition and address them early on, it does save us considerable amount of money of the maintenance in the future. We are at a 30% design with our in-house team and with a $3 million estimate. We anticipate this project to begin construction in October, October of 2020.
Hey, Cody, would you, would you back up to the Washington Franklin, Fourth and Fifth? Because Mayor and Council, when we had reviewed this earlier, you talked about we weren't going to do Fourth and Fifth at the same time, and we're not going to do Franklin and Washington at the same time. So the team will be balancing those projects. And and there there'll be a lot of work in addition to just the street work. There'll be water and sewer work also. And that's where we're getting everything while we're there, but can you talk a little bit about how you'll phase Franklin, Washington, Fourth and Fifth? You're not going to have more than maybe two of those going on at one time? I think Fifth and Washington will be, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so Fifth and Washington are our first two projects to be planned to go. And so as Fifth is a little bit longer of a project than Washington. So as Washington begins to come offline, we'll we'll put in, we'll start Franklin. And then we won't start Fourth until Fifth gets offline. So there's really only two that will be going on at one time. And we'll just progress through that construction and try to be strategic with how we begin Franklin and Fourth.
Well, I just wanted to make sure they heard that.
Thank you, Wiley.
Yes, sir.
Is there a question?
No.
Is is the presentation done? It's still going on?
It's still going on.
Okay, I'll wait till the end.
Okay, so Airport Road Reclamation, this is a project that was brought to our attention by our operations group as a street that they were continuously having to go out and maintain and at points becoming unsafe with a vertical separation that was happening at a bridge on that roadway. This is 1.8 street miles with a construction estimate of as well, I don't think.
Oh, when I click on their face.
Okay, with with construction estimate about $3.9 million, and the construction anticipated to start in September of 2020. Oak Road Improvement is a project that was brought to us by the community as a high-priority project. And as we reviewed this project and realized we needed to put it into our program or move it up in priority into our program, we started doing some geotech investigation, and we determined that portions of this were suitable for a Mill and Overlay treatment, which is substantially cheaper than the reclamation treatment. And so we were able to do two small portions of this road as a Mill and Overlay with a project that is recently closed out. And this portion is what was needed to, it needs to be a reclamation just because of the the state it's in and to get that lifespan we're looking for. So it is currently with LAN with design. They are at 100%, and we should be pushing this over to purchasing pretty soon for bidding. It's 0.9 street miles with a cost estimate of 1.3 million, and we anticipate this construction to begin as early as August of 2020. Mars Drive and Old Hewitt Road, this is a project that began about 2015 with a study. The study was with BSP Engineers, which is now MRB Group. They were tasked to determine what were the, what was the best approach for improvements on these segments of roadway. And after that, they were contracted to do a preliminary design, which they have completed. We are working to get a contract for final design with this team. It is 1.6, 1.6 street miles with a final design cost being about 7, 700,000, 7, close 800,000, sorry. With a construction estimate around 9.3 million. Dutton Avenue Improvement is a project that was also brought forward to us by the community. As we attended Neighborhood Association meetings, this was, this was a segment that was continuously brought up in every neighborhood meeting we attended, or most everyone we attended. And so we determined if we needed to bring this project up in priority. And as we evaluated Dutton Avenue, we determined that it would be cost prohibitive to do this all in one project. So the team decided we were going to break this up into phases. So what you're looking at here is Dutton Avenue Phase One. This is from 11th to 26th. It includes a Mill and Overlay and some reclamation, along with some water sewer and storm work. It is 1.1 street miles with a construction estimate around 5.1 million and the streets portion of that being about 1.5 million. And it's anticipated construction will begin in July of 2020. And we hope to bring forward a Phase Two of that project from 26 to Valley Mills in the future with our program. Harris Creek Road is another street that was, it was already in our program. And utilities department informed us of a ma, a major sewer line being constructed through that corridor. So we partnered with them to add this work into that, into that project, which was on the agenda today, the US 84 Phase Three project. This is 0.7 street miles. The overall construction estimate for that project was about 7.1 with the low bid being Black Rock at about 4.8 million and the street portion of this being about 1.1 million. Construction is anticipated to start June of 2020. So as I've talked to a few of the projects that are coming up, I'd like to highlight some of the projects we've had from the year one of our program. We have the 2018 Street Reclamation that had an engineer's estimate of 4.1 million, a bid amount of 3.28, and project closed out at about 3.27 with a savings from the engineer's estimate to the project about 831,000. Here's some images of that construction efforts. We have Bagby Avenue at the Marketplace Drive intersection. We have the Old Hewitt Road Imperial Intersection looking away from the intersection. We have the New Road and Franklin intersection looking away from the intersection. And we have Brook Avenue at Brook Avenue Elementary. This project, we were able to partner with the contractor to reduce some of the costs within the project. So we were actually able to add this segment on Brook Avenue from Fifth to 15th and still see a savings from the bid amount. Moving on to our next project, we have the 2019 Mill and Overlay Phase One. This had an engineer's estimate about 4.5 million with a bid amount of 3.6, and the project closed out at close to 3.4. And so we saw savings of about 1.1 from the engineer's estimate, 1.1 million from the engineer's estimate to the project closeout. And so the last two projects, you can see there was, there was quite a discrepancy or quite a difference between the engineer's estimate to the bid amount. And I would like to just tell you that from the bids we did receive, we had a couple of low bidders on each one of those projects. And the other bids were really close to the engineer's estimate. So we got lucky with those projects. And with the savings we're receiving on these projects, or we're seeing on these projects, we're able to move some of those funds to projects where we're seeing some some overages in the estimates or some projects that get to construction and we see some, we uncover some things that we weren't expecting and were able to to keep moving the program forward. So here are some streets with that construction project. We have the We have the, this is Chapel Road at the intersection of Chapel Road and Woodgate Drive. This is on Londonderry Drive, close to Providence Hospital. This is at the intersection of New Road and Bagby, close to Waco I S D Stadium. And moving on to the last project, we have Spiegelville Road Reclamation. This engineer's estimate was one point four million, the bid amount was one point eight and the project closed out at close to one point seven. And this was over the engineer's estimate about two hundred and ninety seven thousand. And like I mentioned on the previous two projects, savings from those type of projects help us keep these projects moving forward and fund those. Here is the intersection of Spiegelville Road at Oak Road. This signal that you see is actually a part of this project and is a new signal. So here we have a before picture, this is at Spiegelville at Woodgate Intermediation. You can see the pavement before we perform the treatment and here is a after the, we completed the reclamation. And I know our team is extremely proud of this, this roadway segment as well as the other projects. And so from here, I would like to hand it back over to Jim to finish out the project or the presentation.
So the cost figures shared by Mr. Patello reinforced the fact that pavement is a multi-million dollar business and a continued investment needed by the city of Waco. We clearly need to be efficient, we need to be competitive, we need to produce quality work with great outcome. That is what our citizens expect and that's what we should expect out of ourselves too. So as we look ahead, the slide before you is a summary of the pavement management program's request for funding consideration in F Y twenty one. The pavement management program shall be requesting a figure of thirty five million when emphasis placed again on preservation and rehabilitation. Reconstruction shall be a lower consideration within the funding year. In addition, a series of special one-time request projects shall be submitted for budget consideration. The total amount of funding required shall reflect a necessary cost of over six point five million dollars. Replaying a little bit of history, the first year of the council's pavement management program, the Streets Division was gifted with a sizable source of funding that exceeded any historical form. The sum of funds received continued to escalate in a manner that creates positive results in the maintenance of our overall street network. Again, our request shall be thirty five million for F Y twenty one. Looking forward to F Y twenty one, our Streets Strategic Selection Team has developed a citywide program around the often used term best value. Best value for improvements defined within our software package and more importantly, based on community feedback and reoccurring maintenance demands. On this slide, you shall find the street segments recommended to be addressed in F Y twenty one by the council's pavement management program. Citywide improvements under this program shall address fifty point eight miles of street segments equal to more than eight percent of our growing network of city streets. Following this presentation, the F Y twenty one citywide planned project map for each district and a summary list of street segments shall be shared with council for your consideration. That concludes our presentation. Mr. Patello and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time. Thank you.
Oh, this is Holmes, I'll jump in first. And again, I was, as I requested this agenda item, it was more for me to understand what did we do in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty when we spent ten billion, twenty one, twenty eight, or budgeted right at fifty million in the last three years. And I wasn't, I wasn't keeping track of all the, the dollar amounts that Cody was going through, but I'm trying to reconcile the fifty million that we spent across the projects you were talking about. Was that, are those all, if you added all those up, would those be the fifty million or are those projected? Trying to get, I've got a series of questions and I'll, can you answer that one first?
Yes, sir. So the project that we've indicated there will eat up, in no better term, all the term, all the money that's been obligated in nineteen and twenty. So those projects, and they also cover a lot of money that rolled over from previous fiscal years, that was not a lot of money. The majority of it comes from the council's pavement management commitment in F Y nineteen and twenty. But the projects we have, what we've really got to see is how the bidding community reacts to those projects. One thing that we're having trouble with right now, we're not getting a lot of contractors to the table. We'd love to see more. I'd say our purchasing department has done an amazing job of reaching out beyond those contractors that we would consider local to see if we can get them in the door, but sound bids, good bids, not that, you know, the economy's good at this time, but I do think gas prices will definitely influence the type of prices we get for some of these pavement related projects. So yes, sir, all the projects that we've shown today will eat up that entire fifty million dollars that you referenced.
Okay, so, okay, that's, I'm glad to hear that. And so these are, anything that we talked about on those slides isn't pie in the big numbers we're looking at there, isn't pie in the sky. We have more budgeted funds, those have already been budgeted, allocated and work, at least engineering work has been started on all of those for the most part.
Yes, sir, and I'd say you made a very good point. A lot of these, we've committed a substantial amount of money towards engineering work for projects that are more complicated that we don't feel like in-house we are ready to take on because it would eat up so much of our staff time. So a lot of the funding that has been committed is to start professional service, third-party services for for contracted engineering services that keep these projects moving forward. What we hope eventually is that we're able to build up enough inventory of projects that when we come to you with F Y thirty, that we've got this backlog of projects that we can say, hey, these projects are ready to move forward and take to bidding. We just need the funding to move them forward.
And I give you, for instance, of the twenty eighteen projects that we were trying to get done there. I guess, are you just looking at as a forty nine million dollar kind of pile and how much of that is? Again, I'm all about reconciling the budgeted amount to the project. I think that's a tough discussion after the meeting. But when these projects are done, I guess I was disappointed to see we've gone from fifty one point four to forty seven point four in four years. I was thinking that would at least stay steady or going up, but now when I see that there is quite a bit of money left in what we've already budgeted and allocated to our pavement program. Do we anticipate upon completion of those projects that we will achieve fifty five or sixty? Or do we have any kind of vision view towards what that might be?
The Cartograph Program that council invested in, it does a great job of accounting for that information now. That's something that they recently integrated into that software program. So when we talk about that fifty point six that we think we'll be at come October first, that is an input based on a number of projects being completed on time within that budget that we've received. But what I would say is all of those scenarios that you talk about, it's something recent that we've been adding to our toolbox. So we can, yes, push the type of information that we need, not only planning for next year, but five-year outlook. We can put a certain level of projects, once we get that built around a five-year plan, we can put that into the program and that program will give us the results of how we can get to seventy the quickest.
Yeah, so as we started the really intentional effort towards pavement programs, I would say three years ago in the three years ago budget, are we ahead or behind? Where do you, where do you think? We're behind, behind to me that, that are, maybe some of these projects are just kind of he has a lot to do with, with the streets, but can you speak to that a little bit? Just, are we on?
You're breaking up a little bit, so we didn't hear those last comments that you said.
Okay. Do you, are we, are we, when we started this thing three years ago, do you think we're ahead or behind where we thought we would be? Well, the, I think the simple fact is we use a grade school sliding scale to try to decide if we're doing a great job or if we're doing a poor job, just like you would in elementary. Where we were when the curve started changing was around forty four, a score of forty four. Where we're at today is a score of about forty seven. We think at the end of this fiscal year, which will be October, that we'll be around a score of fifty. So when you ask about a change, when you think of a, a total street network that declines by, if we didn't know, if we put no money in the pavement management program, it would drop by a value of three to five points per year. We're actually, with the amount of money that council is putting into this program, we're actually to, able to increase the value of our network by three points. So if you think of no investment, you'd drop three points, possibly five. And what we're talking about in about a six-month window, we're going to be able to increase it by three points. I think that's a very substantial change in our overall network and something without preservation and without our operations group, those are the two keys to making a huge difference. Because our preservation projects, going back to the amount of money, a reclamation, you're looking at about a hundred and twenty dollars a square yard. Preservation, you're looking at somewhere around five to eight dollars a square yard. So if we can make sure that we're strategic in those preservation efforts, we can get a lot of square yards of roads done each fiscal year.
Hey Jim, this is Kyle, just to follow up on, on Jim's question. I think what he was asking, and I would be curious too, I mean, do you feel like we are where we, you thought we would be at this point or are we ahead of that or behind that at this point?
My personal opinion, and it's just based off my experience, is that we're, we're well beyond where I thought we would be. What we were looking for in the first two years is try to find a way to stabilize our network, not let our network deteriorate into a point where we're doing reclamation across the city. What we're doing is trying to get ahead of it with milling overlays to save that structure. What we're looking at in F Y twenty one is primarily milling overlay, that's why you see that number in that budget figure. I think milling overlay, if we were, if we were fortunate enough to get the thirty five million, about twenty two to twenty three million of that would just be milling overlay. And what that is, is it's trying to preserve our network from going into where we have to completely rebuild a road or reclaim a road. So if you ask me, I think the fact that we didn't just stabilize it, but because of a lot of great people within the city and the contractors walking in our door and trying to work with us, we're actually improving our system. We don't do anything independent. It's, it's a huge group of local business owners, citizens and a team within the city of Waco that I think we're bringing home something that is really special to think that we're, the trend is going upward. Everybody talks about the trend, well, in pavement, we're going upward too.
We don't want to flatten the curve on that.
Unless it's around Lake Shore Drive, then we want to kind of flatten that out. That's a dangerous curve.
Councilmember Holmes, did you have other questions?
Um, and maybe a more specific one about just as we started some of the projects last fall and got hung up in the weather of particularly, I guess it's just the micro-surfacing in certain neighborhoods. And as we get back out there this spring, I just want to make sure we're not cutting corners and make, and maybe you can talk a little bit to how, when we left it off and we start back up, what are, what are we going through as far as making sure that we just didn't leave it in kind of what state we left it in, what we need to do to get it back up to speed where we thought we could have gotten last fall.
It's been challenging since we can't meet face to face. We like to bring our contractors in and visit with them face to face, but we've been using all the tools that are out there to try to stay in good communication. So our communication didn't start as of pavement program. You know, usually our asphalt season's April first to the end of October. We've been talking to these contractors that were having to stop business because of inclement weather. We've been talking to them since December, we meet with them about, now we do it online, but we meet with them about every month. And I would say there's two particulars that are in preservation right now that we are meeting with them on a weekly basis. So I think communication is the key to that and I don't think our staff does anything but want the greatest success out of those contractors rolling out a program. We, we don't want these projects to roll into the next fiscal year, so we want them to get completed with contracts as quickly as possible, get those inventoried, find out if we have savings and get that money re-obligated to other projects. We have a lot of projects that are borderline not knowing what the bids are going to be. Do we need money for those projects? Washington is one we've talked about many, many times. But all those cost savings that we're able to capture, they can only be captured if we get those contracts closed. So to our staff, it's very important to stay on the contractor, work in a partnership environment and make sure that they're able to hit those milestones that we have for completion so we can reinstitute the money savings that we have into other projects. I think that's part of the success we're seeing with our P C I score.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Holmes. Other questions?
I, I had some questions. Thank you first and foremost, Jim and Cody, for your presentation today. I really do appreciate it. And I was very interested to see the presentation that was going to come forward today. I like Councilmember, Councilmember Holmes and Mayor Dever had a question about, do you think we are where we need to be or ahead of it? And then also, you've answered that, but I guess to piggyback off of that question is also let you know with the amount of people that are not traveling our streets as four, eight weeks ago, are, is the crew, are the crews finding it easier to work on these streets and is it, is it accelerating the work a little bit more when the streets aren't as busy?
Well, our operations team, we're very dynamic. You know, through all the issues we've had with coronavirus, I've never heard a complaint. I've never had anything where our supervisors are coming to us and saying the gentleman or the lady is concerned about their work activities during a very difficult situation at home and, and at work. So everybody's working really hard. Our crews do an inventory of what they want to complete each day and they submit that to my office. And I will say they are doing an amazing job. And when you talk about crack seal and base repair and you talk about coming up and doing level ups or working with us to do demonstration projects, we recently did a demonstration project even during this time just to see if we got a new strategy that we can use in our toolbox of, of opportunity with the pavement program. So everybody's working really hard. I think, yes, to that, we feel safer. We feel like we've got a, a plate to work on that doesn't have to deal with a lot of pedestrians, doesn't have to deal with a lot of vehicles. Parking's always an issue, especially in the downtown area, we're not seeing as much parking. So the environment is great for us to work in. We do have a few challenges on the engineering side, you know, doing a traffic count right now is extremely difficult because you're not really going to get reality in those counts. So challenges on the engineering side, but what I will say is on the construction side, our contractors are working every day like we expected them to do before all this started. I'd say our operations team is, if we had ten more people, we'd be able to keep them busy. Our infrastructure just demands that type of attention. So yes, moving forward, you know, I, I think the council's done a great job of us giving us the personnel to work with, but we could use a dozen more and we could keep them extremely busy trying to take advantage of the fact we can do it a lot cheaper internal than we can do it through a contracted effort.
Thank you. And so in, in doing that, so I know you are, in one of the charts that you showed, in order to get to the seventy points that your goal is, you're estimating that thirty five million dollars a year for the next six or seven years, I believe, will get you to that seventy point goal that you have, is that correct?
That is correct and I will say that it's all algorithm-based. So you're talking about a lot of formula-driven software that produces those type of facts. I don't think me and Cody could sit at a calculator and get to those type of values, but Cartograph is always trying to fine-tune their software program. We've had a few sessions here in the city of Waco. They've also had a, what was it, statewide convention here in Waco that we were party to, that we kind of helped host. So they are a big player in the decisions that we make and we keep them in and out of our doors, I'd say on a monthly basis. And again, that's just to make sure that what we're doing with a software program that's not human-driven. It's, it's got a lot of formulas and math built into it that is helping us make the right decisions. And at this point, yes, sir, I think thirty five million, I think that's also what we reported in the first year of the pavement management program. We thought that could really be the difference maker. And we're coming to you today that we think thirty five million over a nine-year window, each year thirty five million will get us above seventy.
Wonderful. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that correctly. Speaking of Dutton Avenue, and I am going to ask this, I know we have an estimated time of Phase One to start July twenty twenty. Do we have an estimated completion time?
It's estimated about an eighteen-month project, so with
So would it be finishing up early 2023, I believe? 22, maybe?
Or December 2021, January 2022?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay. And then Phase Two will start sometime after that, correct?
Phase Two is one of those projects that's going to be very difficult. We definitely have it targeted within our pavement management program. It is a full reconstruction, is a huge price tag. It's probably, you're probably looking at at least three times what we're paying for. You know, you're talking about 11th to 26th has a cost figure. You're talking about three times that, just to go from 26 to our city limits and maybe a little bit beyond. So we still need to explore that. We need to explore how those costs are going to fit within a pavement management program. It may be that we have to break it into two more phases. So I would say we will definitely stay in touch with you to make sure you understand how, it's important to us. We've heard your community, you know, through the Neighborhood Association meetings, they feel like that road is very important. Well, it's very important to our pavement management program. We just have to be very strategic in how we approach dollars so that we don't use the majority of our funds to do one roadway. Maybe we can break it into smaller segments. Maybe we can do some infrastructure improvements, maybe to curb and gutter with some level up. There's a lot of options to do things besides full reconstruction, but it is something that when we decide to do something that'll last 20, 30, 40 years, it's going to have to be a reconstruction project.
No, and I completely agree with you. The only reason I was asking is because that is one of the major intersections with the Floyd Casey area. And as we begin to redevelop the Floyd Casey area and as we begin to have more traffic on that street, I think it's important that we also take that into consideration. But, but I mean, I'm very happy to see that half of Dutton will be, I think you guys are working on what I would consider the worst part of Dutton. You're taking care of that first and foremost, so I appreciate that. And even as we move into Phase Two, I would say, hey, let's just think about with the redevelopment of Floyd Casey Stadium, what that looks like as well. But overall, thank you so much for your, for your questions and your presentation, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Yeah, thanks again, Jim and Cody, for your presentation. I just had two quick questions. One, I believe you said that we would be getting, each district would get an individual breakdown by district, and I wanted to, of the works that are in progress, and I wanted to make sure that, that it was what was planned, what was in progress, and what was the timeline. Is that what you said?
What we'll be talking about with what we're going to bring to you, I would say within the next two weeks is a printout of your particular district and what roads we're going to be looking at. It'll be a list of roads that'll be done within that district. Yes, ma'am? And that'll be for FY 21.
Okay. Can we, and I know it was kind of listed in this presentation, but can we also see what's been, what's been done and what's in progress from FY 18?
And that should not be a huge challenge for us. Most of that we have documented in Excel spreadsheets. We'll pull it out, those Excel spreadsheets and share that with you. Yes, ma'am.
That would, that would be awesome, man. You know, I'm, I'm, because I, you know, as we go to the Neighborhood Association meetings and we talk with our constituency groups, you know, they like to know, you know, well, I thought that we were going to have this and, you know, where are we? And if I, I need to see it so that I can, can speak to them with assurance and, and make sure that they're getting the information that they need. So that was that question and thank you for that. Number two, I wanted to, as we prepare, you know, because these are the things, as we do, you know, what our work is and as we're going forward, not that there have to be any, any, any specific changes to fiduciary requests at this time, but I want to be mindful that as we go forward in dealing post-pandemic, that we have a Plan B ready. Just think, you know, if, what, you know, prioritize list, and I know you all do because you've been prioritizing since the first time when I got elected and we had the big Better Streets Waco presentation, right after the election. But wanted to make sure that we, you know, we're hitting with, I know we're asking for 35 over nine years, but, you know, should, should there have to be a shift? Is there a Plan B in thinking? I just, I would prefer that people be prepared than not if we have to make adjustments due to our budget constraints for the next budget year.
Yes, ma'am. We are prepared, we're prepared for that challenge. That's, you know, our, the thing about is our network keeps growing and being a little selfish, we hope that our budget keeps growing. But yes, we understand.
Because you asked now.
We understand the challenges that we're all facing. You know, business owners are facing it and we definitely understand that we'll be facing that here at the city of Waco. And, and we will definitely, whatever we decide will be vetted through management and then on to council to make sure that everybody understands what we can do with the dollars that we are granted. Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
And I'll go ahead. I only have one question that I'd like to follow up. It was exactly because Andrea kind of stole what I wanted to ask. If you go back one slide, because I know right now just kind of the budgetary pressures and where we are economically, you're requesting 35 million. And if we could go back one slide so I could, the information that's on, sorry, I'm pointing at my screen, you can't see that.
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, you're good. No, it's okay. Well, what she's, I know, so I know we're requesting 35 million. I just, I'd like to make sure, ah, there we go. Thank you. Oh, wait, back to other way, other way. One more. One more. There we go. That's it. Okay, perfect. If you could, understanding that as we go through the kind of the budgetary prognosis over the next couple of months, if just these, just this data added to the projected pavement score, understanding all the assumptions that go into it, if you could just do that at 35 million, if you don't mind just doing it in five million increments, you know, down to 15 or so, so we can see, hey, if we only have 20 million this year, we'll be able to address 30 miles and we'll have our pavement score at X, just so we can make a conscientious decision as we set our priorities when we're, when we're considering this. So, because I know we all understand kind of where we are. We all understand that streets and our infrastructure is a very high priority for all of us, but just having that, being able to see what it looks like at different funding levels, I think will help us make a, an easier and quicker decision when that time comes in the budget meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Jim and Cody, thank you for that excellent, excellent presentation. It's great to see all this work actually being done on the roads now. And I really appreciate y'all's leadership and the teams, the team that is working with you to get this work done. Are there any council requests for scheduling a future agenda? Okay, seeing none, that will conclude our work session and we will reconvene for a business session at 6 o'clock. We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session or executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:19 PM.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, real property, Text Up and Meeting Act, Section 551.072. And two, economic development, Text Up and Meeting Act, Section 551.087. Mayor and council, we are going to clear everything, close down the system, and I will send you the conference phone bridge so that you can call in for executive session. And we are now in executive session at 4:10 PM.